This is the Wednesday, September 2nd, 2020, meeting of the Franklin Township Planning Board. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and has been determined that public's attendance and meetings at the Franklin Township Planning Board would pose a risk to the health, safety, and welfare of the public. As a result, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers to the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format, and is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the Planning Board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier-News, on the township website, the township cable station, exterior doorways, and municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting. Link to the virtual meeting via WebEx, for call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials may be available via the township website and/or by appointment in the municipal building. Formal action will be taken at this virtual meeting. As a reminder to board members, we ask that you refrain from asking questions until the applicant has presented all witnesses and exhibits, which will be irrelevant tonight. I will open the board to board questions after the applicant is done. In order to reduce potential background noise, we ask that you mute yourselves unless you speak or provide a vote. For the public, for those who are watching via WebEx, please indicate in the chat section whether you desire to provide input. Please provide your name and address at the appropriate time in the meeting. Township staff will announce your name on mute you, and you'll have opportunity to provide comment. For those who are listening via the call-in number, at the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will unmute the phone lines and they ask that you take your turn in providing your input. You'll be asked once again to provide your name and address. All right, so with that, please let's see if we can do our technological virtual flag and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
I think Chase is very...
...which is their nation, individual liberty, justice for all.
All right.
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Carl Howe?
Here.
Mahir Rafiq?
Here.
Cecile MacGyver?
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow is listening on the phone and answering me through my phone text, so she's here. Mustafa Mansray? Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Carol Schmidt asked to be excused, and Chairman Racini?
Here. So, before we get into the regular meeting agenda, I just wanted to announce that one here for Somerset Run Condominium Associates, PLN 19-00013, that has been deferred, I believe, until October 7th, with no further notification needed. So, board members, please hold on to your materials for that application. And I will note also that there is no further notification needed. So, this is your notice if you wish to attend that meeting. That matter is scheduled to be heard on October 7th, 2020.
And Mike, let me just read the remainder of the notice there. So, for those that are going to be calling in or participating via WebEx, And for those that are going to listen via telephone, the call-in number will be 408-418-9388, and the access code will be 1294792394. If you have any questions, you can call Christine Woodbury at 732-873-2500, extension 6215. But just again, to make it clear, the Somerset Run condo hearing will not be held tonight. It will be held on October 7th, 2020.
Thanks, Mark. All right, so that makes our meeting tonight fairly straightforward, I think. The first item in business is approval of the regular meeting of July 15th. And those eligible to render a motion on the minutes or second include everyone except Cecile MacGyver. Excused, of course. So, I'll entertain him.
I'm sorry, was there a first for the minutes?
I'm moving, Christine.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Howe?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow? Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Racini?
Yes. One resolution tonight, that's Ivy Property LLC, PLN 19-00015. I'll entertain him for that.
Move to.
I will second.
Okay. Carl Howe?
Yes.
Mahir Rafiq?
Yes.
Cecile MacGyver?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow? Robert Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Racini?
Yes. Okay, so there's no discussion items, so I will write, Mark, there's nothing for discussion?
We will have a work session. They're on in the meeting.
So, I just want to know if I can open to the public. So, I'll make a motion to open to the public for...
I move to open to the public.
Second.
Thanks, Cecile. In favor?
Aye.
To oppose, okay. So, the meeting is now open to the public in this for any planning comments that may happen.
Okay, so I'm going to unmute the callers. But again, as the chairman just indicated, this is not for a hearing. This is for any general planning commentary. So, I'm going to unmute the callers. Does anybody wish to speak, any other people calling in? Okay, going once? Going twice? Yeah, I'm not hearing anybody who wishes to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Saying no one wished to speak, I move to close to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same? Okay, the meeting is closed to the... And that leaves us with our work session in business, so I'll turn it over to Mark.
Okay. Can I ask Christine to put up... So, this is something that we had discussed roughly this time last year. And what this ordinance and associated master plan amendment does, well, it's... I guess to summarize it, it's taking the M1 and M2 light manufacturing zones and the corporate business zone. There's, as you can see here, these are the areas that are around 287. And then on the next page is the... Scroll down, Christine. Is the M2 zones that are in the Veronica Avenue area. It's basically taking those existing zones and combining them into one new zone that's proposed to be called the Business and Industry District, with one list of permitted uses and one set of bulk standards like setbacks, building heights, buffers, et cetera. So, this came out of an economic development study that the township had done a few years ago. Vince Damac and I took those recommendations and put this ordinance together. Again, we discussed it last year. What was put on the website is predominantly the same as was presented last year. The Planning Board did have some comments and some suggestions, mostly about clarifying things such as setbacks and buffers. In the version that was put on the website, I highlighted in blue the areas that were proposed to be changed. Mike, I don't know, do you want me to... I'm not sure if you want me to go through kind of an in-depth discussion or just kind of bring it up to... Again, this was discussed before. So, do you want to just put it up to board questions?
Yeah, I think maybe... I'm looking to see if we have any board that's really new. Since we discussed this, I don't think we do, at least in attendance. So, I think maybe just in a bridged version we'll do, because maybe, you know, we all need some refresher in terms of what was discussed last year. But I don't think you need to go into depth, and then we can maybe go to questions.
Okay. But, you know, I think what I'll do is this. The Land Use Committee, this was also presented to the Land Use Committee of Council earlier today, who I believe also had seen this previously. And there were a few issues that they brought up. So, and it was suggested that we discuss this with the Planning Board. The first question was, there are a number of existing residences in some of these zones. And when somebody has an existing house in a M1 zone, or in this case, it'd be the Business and Industry Zone, if they want to put a small addition or put a deck or something like that, technically, they need to go to the zoning board for a use variance. So, it was suggested in association with another ordinance that we're working on, that we allow those existing homes as permitted uses, subject to the bulk requirements of the R10 zone, which fits in with the setbacks, et cetera, of these existing homes. So, the question is posed to you, in this new zone, it's not currently in the draft, but does the Planning Board have any concern or issue with including language to that effect in this existing ordinance, in this proposed ordinance?
No, I think that's very fair.
And to make it clear, too, it does say existing single-family residences. So, it's not allowing new homes to be built. If somebody wanted to come in and build a new home in this zone, just like today, that would be a use variance, it's not permitted.
It's like being grandfathered in, yes.
It's kind of like being grandfathered in, and then, and you're grandfathered in subject to these certain bulk requirements.
Yes.
Right, no, that, I agree with Cecile, that makes a lot of sense. I mean, we need to make the burden higher on, you know, any existing homes just because they're, you know, a non-conforming pre-existing use, you know...
Well, because the zone has changed since I moved it.
Right, and so now they're a non-conforming pre-existing use with the zone change. And so, you know, obviously, you wouldn't build a new home. But I agree, you know, you don't want to make that, you know, burden on a homeowner to do very simple, you know, remodel or whatever the case may be, going to...
Well, you want to encourage improvements.
Right.
Any other comments about that question?
I have a somewhat similar question. Requirements for, you know, substantial buffers if you're bordering on a residential zone. And I'm a bit concerned about the hotel that's on Pierce Street, sort of corner of Pierce and New Brunswick, across from the Cedar Manor Apartments and Townhomes, which is also residential. And, but it's an existing building. Do we need to do anything to protect that existing use?
That's a good question. Typically, buffers would not come into play if it's separated by a street. It's usually when it's, you know, abutting with a single property line. But we could certainly add language that clarifies that.
Okay, good.
I have a question, Mark. What happens if in the future, someone is able to acquire several of these houses that might be together into, that are the R10 people, into a big enough property to bring a commercial application forward? Does that become a zoning board or a planning board? Are those people living in a new business commercial zone? Or are they a separate R10 zone?
No, no, so remaining in this business district. So, all it's doing is essentially grandfathering that existing use. If somebody was able to buy five adjoining homes and wanted to build an office building or one of the other permitted uses, then that, then it's a permitted use. They would just come in for site plan approval, just like any other property in the zone.
Okay, I don't have any problem with that. I just think that we should have a way of making sure that that's communicated to those people, that that, in the future, an application for a business might, will not be a... That's the same as an approved use.
Yeah, so, just give me one second, I got a question about somebody wishing to participate. All right, hi, Jen.
Hey.
You're on.
Thanks for unmuting me.
All right, so I'm going to keep you unmuted, so just be careful with the background noise.
Okay, I'll mute myself.
Okay. Yeah, so Bob, to answer your question, the zone doesn't change. So, if somebody was to call the zoning office, for example, and say, "What zone am I in?" Or if they were to go to our website to look to see what zone they're in, they're going to be in that Business and Industry Zone.
Okay.
But somewhere in the language of the ordinance, it'll just separately say, those, you know, the existing home is subject, is essentially grandfathered, subject to the R10. So, they really have two options. They can stay and live in their home and do modest modifications to their home, or they could sell to somebody who want, and they could buy adjoining properties and build some type of commercial development.
Okay, fine, thanks.
No, I'm fine right now. So, then the other question that was raised by Land Use was, so one of the issues was that, you know, by combining, essentially, one of the things that we're doing really is, again, by combining these different zones, there's certain uses, and we're also, and we're adding, proposing to add assisted living and nursing homes as permitted uses in this zone. So, then the question was, is that, is that something we want to do? Because you have, theoretically, you could have an assisted living next to a warehouse, you know, and that could have an impact to the people who are living in that nursing home or assisted living. Then the question was, do we want to take that out of the proposed ordinance? Or keep it in, but add some buffering language that says, you know, if the assisted living is there, and then a new warehouse is coming in, they have larger buffer and setback requirements because they are next to this quasi-residential use. So, that was, again, kind of a discussion and question that Land Use is posing for your consideration.
I think that any existing use, we should, we should provide the appropriate buffering if a new use is coming in, you know, next to it, that...
I agree.
You know, if we're going to have a mixed type of mix zone, then we need to protect the structures that are already existing there also. And if it's just buffering, it is just buffering. I don't mean just buffering, but if it's a nursing home that's there or any other uses like that, or, you know, non-heavy-duty commercial, then they should have an obligation, the new use should have an obligation to buffer from the old one.
Yeah, to be clear, there is, so what we were talking about was, the proposed ordinance has larger buffering, but also larger building setbacks when you adjoin a residential district. And if, and while we're on this topic, if the building goes above 50 feet in height, the buffering and the building setback requirements go up even more. So, the suggestion was to use those same, the same requirements, the same building setbacks and the same buffering requirements if you're adjoining a single-family district. Those same larger setbacks and buffers would also apply in the case of being adjoining assisted living or nursing home.
I could go for that.
Well, it's not just an existing assisted living or nursing home. I mean, one might come in five years hence, and then a warehouse or an industrial use wanting to come in after that.
Yeah, Ted, what I meant, what I meant by existing is, you know, the nursing home or assisted living would have to come first. So, if there's a warehouse and an assisted living comes after it, the warehouse doesn't then have to provide a buffer, obviously, they were there first. But if assisted living is built, I'll just say, you know, 2025, then a warehouse goes in next to it in 2030, then that warehouse in 2030 would be subject to these setbacks.
Yes, yes. That's fair.
It's very fair.
All right, so any other comments or questions on that?
I think that's fair because the developer always has the option to buy out the, if he makes the offer attractive enough, to buy out the residential property that's causing the setback difference.
Bob Von Lacher made the point that nobody wants to build assisted living or nursing homes right now because so many people died off in...
COVID, yes. Well, the requirements are more strict now.
Not sure, any other comments or questions on that topic?
Nothing for me, Mark. Very clear.
And then the last question that was raised at Land Use, and Ted, this was your question about Section 16 that talked about, and what this was talking about was, and I think there was a typo in this. This section's talking about parking lot setbacks. So, the... No, that's okay, I'll just describe it, Christine. So, I think that while the existing ordinance in the M1 and M2 zones, and I believe the CB zone as well, the parking lot setbacks are five feet from the side and rear property lines. But 50 feet, or the front yard requirement, the same front yard requirement, front yard setback from buildings applies to parking lots. And if you recall, when we discussed this the first time, the Planning Board made it very clear that you wanted to keep that, because you want to keep the, you know, it's one thing to be more flexible, you know, encourage business, but you also want to have the, you know, that suburban commercial or suburban, you know, industrial zone look as opposed to having buildings right up at the street and parking lots right at the street. So, obviously, this ordinance would continue that. So, Ted, I think the best way to explain your question is, what that section that you were questioning about the 75 feet, I think that sentence should come out. What that was getting at is, in the situations where buildings, because the CB zone currently allows buildings to go up to 65 feet. So, what the ordinance does is, since the M1 and M2 zones caps it at 50 feet, this ordinance basically has one set of requirements if you stick to that 50 feet requirement of the M1 and M2 zones. But then if you go up to 65 feet, then there's larger setbacks and larger buffers. And I believe we talked about that at the last meeting. I think this 75 feet was, I guess the bottom line is this. What I'm recommending is that the parking lot setback, I don't think the parking lot setback needs to increase if the building is taller. You know, if the building is taller, the building setback should be larger. But I don't think the parking lot needs to be setback more. So, I would suggest that it be 50 feet, regardless of building, you know, stay out of the 50-foot setback. The other setbacks for parking lots are five feet to the front end, front and rear. But if it joins a residential, it needs to stay out of the required buffers. If the buffer is 50 feet or the buffer is 75, well, you obviously can't have a parking lot in a buffer. Does that clarify that issue for you, Ted? Yeah, yeah. And is the rest of the board understand? So, again, it's, you know, the parking lot, 50 feet front, five feet front and rear, that's what exists right now. And again, it would clarify, if it's adjoining a residential, you can't have a parking lot in a buffer joining a residence. Yes. Okay. And I think, oh, I should bring up one other, one other change compared to what you saw previously. Christine, can you bring up? Let's scroll down. Yeah, actually, right there, yeah, go up a little bit. And then can you, can you zoom in and see under where it says proposed, there's that... There you go, yep, perfect. Okay, so you see a few labels there, M1 to A, M1 to B1, PAC to B1. So, that is the property, it's, well, three properties that are to either side of the, kind of the back of the Summerfields, that's on Weston Canal Road. And it's three properties on Weston Canal Road. Two of them are about one acre in size, the other one's about five acres or so in size. And the two small properties, they both have homes on them. And they're basically remnant, actually, all three of them really don't, aren't really appropriately zoned. I think back when the Summerfields area was rezoned to the Planned Adult Community District, the larger of the lots, if you see that lot, that's where it's pointed out, PAC to B1, that was put into the Planned Adult Community Zone, but was not included in Summerfields. So, and it's not large enough to be, I think you have to have 100 or 150 acres to do that type development. So, it basically has, this is similar to that, those properties that we rezoned a few years ago that were in the Canal Walk Zone or one-acre residential lots. So, it basically had no effective zoning. So, what this is proposing to do is take that four or five-acre property and put it into this Business and Industry Zone. So, I'm pointing these out because these are really only three zones at this point, you know, in this ordinance, that where the zoning is actually going from, it's not just an M1, M2, CB, you know, putting them together. This is, you know, an actual change in the zoning district. So, it's currently zoned Planned Adult Community, proposed to go to the B1. But the one thing I wanted to point out is, prior to the Planned Adult Community District, that was in the M1. So, in my opinion, what this is doing is basically putting it back in the zone from which it came. The smaller property that says M1 to B1, that's a one-acre residential property that is still M1 now, because again, I think whatever reason it wasn't included in that, I'll call it the Summerfield Zone. So, that's proposed to go to the B1 or Business and Industry Zone. Then the other zone where, the other lot where it says M1 to A, that's a one-acre residential lot. It's separated from the other lots by a little extension of Summerfields. And this is proposed, this ordinance is proposed, put that into the A Zone, which would basically make that existing single-family house a permitted use. And it joins all the rest of the A-zone. So that's basically the proposal for that area. That's, I wanted to point these changes out because we did not discuss this last summer.
And that little bit of of PAC in between is where the driveway will be to go up to we'll have a township park up the hill there.
Yes. And if and if we do, if it, you know, is put into the business and industry zone, the because that area is zoned residential, this ordinance would require these larger setbacks from residential zoning district, larger buffers, because it specifically points out the PAC zone as, again, larger setbacks being being required.
So Mark, only one of those three parcels with a home on it is the one that says M1 to A?
I think that B1 may also.
Yeah, that is a that is a home on it as well.
Then why don't we make that A?
Um, well, that 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 property is, my understanding, it's under common ownership with the one next to it.
Okay.
So I was just using, I was just using that, you know, the the driveway, if you will, to the Summerfields Park as the zoning district boundary, rather than having a kind of a property sitting by itself. I think if combining that with the larger four-acre would give a better, larger, more square development site.
So, yeah, but I might be preferable to keep it more residential in A than, you know, because I mean, they will need a minimum lot size, you know, they have that, like acres or whatever. I I when you say common ownership, you mean common ownership to the M1 to A property?
To the PAC, to the PAC, to the to the PAC, PAC to B Business Industry.
Okay, then that that makes it a little bit different.
I know, I know, we don't have any proposals, but I know we've received numerous inquiries about both of those properties. So it's being it's being marketed. And the interest is is for warehousing.
All right, and and so together, M1 to B1 and the PAC to B1, those two properties together would be a conforming parcel?
Uh, I'd have to measure that, I believe so. Yes, it would definitely, because the the under this zone, the requirement would be two acres. So definitely, it would definitely be conforming.
All right, then in that case, I guess that makes sense. I mean, I I'd be nice to keep it residential, especially since it's, you know, along the canal and all that. But, um, you know, I I guess as long as you can have a a conforming parcel in there under this proposed zone, and one, it already was one M1, it it may be harder to justify under land use law than than to keep then to rezonate to A. So I guess that makes, I guess that makes a little more
Well, yeah, and the other thing to think about is with the other change we discussed a few minutes ago, we're gonna, this ordinance would have that language that basically grandfather is in the existing residences.
Right, right, right.
If somebody didn't want to develop that, they're in essence grandfathered in as well.
Right, okay. Thanks.
So any other comments, questions about these proposals?
Nope.
I have one comment, I guess it can apply to to the new business industrial zone. And I don't know how other people would feel about it, but is there something that we have in our ordinance that when buildings are built where they're not oriented toward the frontage, where they rotate the buildings so the main entrance does not face the street? Is there anything that we have that can require landscaping requirements as though the building were the main entrance, the side that faces the street should not be a, you know, huge blank cement block wall or whatever it is of a of a warehouse? It should have, it should be landscaped appropriately as someone that's on a street frontage.
Well, I I'd say that we do have that in certain sections of the ordinance. Certainly in in areas like the redevelopment area in Hamilton Street, we have design standards. We also have design standards for commercial, like retail. But but those design standards actually specifically do not apply currently to industrial uses, manufacturing, warehousing. So we could certainly look into that and add some language.
You know, either the either a landscaping language or if a building is going to be constructed that way, that maybe there's a bigger buffering requirement between in the front yard between the building and the street. You know, it it'll come up in the discussion if you if we're looking into it. But I was just wondering if there is something we could do about it.
Yeah, I'd put some of that exactly how to write that, but we certainly could do something with it.
Okay.
Mark, this is Charles, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The concern I have about this area of of the township is I see attempts to make it more pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly. But with this change, with this plan here, is there anything we could do to definitely encourage that? I would like to see it progress more towards becoming more pedestrian bicycle-friendly as opposed to moving away from it.
Schoolhouse Road is scheduled to be repaved in the next year, and it is certainly wide enough to delineate at least bike lanes along its sides. And that's something we have to keep after Carl Houck about.
Yeah, Schoolhouse is actually under reconstruction now. They started yesterday, gets paved next week.
So I think that's
Forgot you were there, Carl. So we could paint, at least paint lines to set off bicycle lanes along the sides.
Uh, there there are shoulders. I'd have to look to see how it lays out with the left-turn lanes we have into the Canal Walk and Summerfields communities.
Yeah. So I think that I think that's, well, first of all, I think obviously, you know, these are standards that apply to the development of, you know, private property as opposed to what may or may not occur within the township right-of-way. But with that said, we do have language, you know, again, in our commercial design standards that talk about pedestrian circulation on-site, pedestrian circulation out to the street, requiring bicycle racks, you know, things of that nature in our commercial design standards. And, you know, we have similar language about what what Bob Thomas just discussed. So we might want to take a look at that, those commercial design standards. I mean, certainly, some of them are not really applicable to commercial development, I mean, industrial development. I mean, it's, you know, it talks about having, you know, like common areas where people can eat and you know, having sitting areas and things like that, that I were more intended for shopping centers, having a focal point of your architectural design. You know, I don't know if those would necessarily apply, but certainly having onsite, having vicinity facilities and amenities for 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 people who may bike, having connection sidewalk connections out to the street, having a sidewalk along the frontage. I think all of those are things that I think we currently do look for when site plans come in, but it's not for commercial, for industrial development is not explicitly in our ordinance yet. So we certainly could could look into that.
I have a quick question on that too, since we were, since streets and and bike lanes came into the discussion. Is there any chance or thought been given when we're delineating bike lanes as to doing what a number of other cities and towns are doing? And that is making the designations in a different color paint. For instance, there's one place I know that they're all green bike lanes instead of the same paint as that that marks the road, the main street. It it kind of brings home to drivers the fact that it is a bike lane, makes everybody aware of it. I don't think there's a, I'm probably wrong on this, I don't think there's a tremendous amount of increased cost involved just to change color. But I will say, it's just just the just noticing recently, I guess since maybe March, there seems to be an awful lot of more people riding bikes. And if you've tried to buy one new recently, you you have about a four or five-month wait to get it because a place like Bike and Gear doesn't even have anything in stock. I think that a different difference in line colors could be a big impact for safety features for everybody. Maybe, you know, just a thought, something to think about.
Yeah, I know, Charles probably knows about that a lot more than I do. I don't, I don't think that, you know, that's something, you know, you're not going to have a bike lane, I don't think on a warehouse property, a bike lane's more in the public right-of-way. So I don't know, it's then necessarily something for this ordinance, but I don't know, Charles, do you have, do you have anything to add about that?
Yeah, I I I think it's important, like, we understand public and private right-of-way piece. But to your point, the connection to those private properties is very important. There could be many employees who are choosing to to bike to work that work at these commercial places. And we we should design the campus as well as our public right-of-ways to accommodate all most of transportation. I don't know why Franklin Township doesn't have lanes that are already green. That's that's up to the township, but it, maybe Carl or someone else could tell me, I don't know why, but it's an easy, it's a really easy thing to do. And Franklin is very bike, I mean, we, I see thousands of people every every Saturday or Sunday on the roadways throughout this entire area. So I think making it more bicycle-friendly and pedestrian-friendly on these campuses would benefit all of us.
I mean, we've been integrating it into repaving or overlay projects as applicable. I know we're adding a bike lane to, which maybe be next week also, to New Brunswick Grove between Cedar Grove and Demott. And then, you know, as things come up, we, you know, areas could be painted. I've never seen different colors, at least in Franklin, the standard is is the white. You know, with the appropriate signage, standard signage that we have in town on all the other county roads, those are our signs also, the bike lane signs. So I mean, I guess we could look into it, but I'd have to see what other towns are doing.
Yeah, I mean, I I just think to bring this to a conclusion, I I think Charles' idea is a good one. I mean, I think I think there's certainly things that we can do with the design standards that we're putting in to encourage the type of things that he's talking about in terms of of, you know, better better bike and pedestrian access. I mean, you are along, you are along, I mean, maybe a lot of people don't really, you know, bike to, you know, especially if they're warehouses and there are very few employees typically, you know, it's a little hard. But I mean, i- in terms of at least giving giving a developer something to shoot for and then maybe to, you know, if they want to argue that they should be exempt from certain things because there is a specific type of use, then that's a discussion we can have. But at least if you have the standards in the zone, you know, you could have that discussion rather than rather than the, you know, the more difficult ways the other way around. Something in there that that's not there. So just, I I think, I think just to try to take that feedback and do and do what we can with it, Mark, is is probably not not such a bad idea. But do do we have any other, I I mean, what's sort of the next step in the in the process? This goes to the council and back to us again and
What I would suggest is, so the land use committee wants to discuss this again at their meeting at the end of September. What I would suggest is, between now and your next meeting, which is the 16th, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take, I'm going to do another draft. I'll make the changes in underlying and strikeout, so you'll see exactly what the changes are. I heard, you know, Bob's comment, Charles's comment, so what I'm going to suggest, as well as some of these others, I'm going to take a look at the commercial design standards and see if there are certain requirements that we should specifically kind of include for industrial and warehouse development. And I'll make those proposed changes in the next draft. You'll get it for the September 16th, and we can discuss those specific changes. And you can tell me if you're happy with them.
Sounds like a good plan to me.
Yes. Sounds good.
That's smart.
So that's all I have for you tonight.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. Do you have a to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, everyone, have a great rest of your week, great Labor Day weekend, stay safe.
You too, bye-bye.